More meeting. So, welcome to the Santa Barbara County Board of Education, April 6th regular meeting. I would like to introduce our Spanish interpreter. There they are. And there they appear. Thank you. If you'd like to go ahead with your comments, please.
Thank you. This is a bilingual message which will be repeated in English. Este es un mensaje bilingüe que se repetirá en inglés. Buenas tardes. Con el fin de facilitar el acceso lingüístico proporcionaremos interpretación entre inglés y español. Mi nombre es Steven Watson. Mi compañera ahí en el otro cuarto es Regina Santos. Y proporcionaremos interpretación simultánea para los que estén en persona si es necesario, pero también para los que nos acompañan a través de Zoom. Si están en Zoom, estas son las instrucciones para acceder a la interpretación en español. Si está utilizando una computadora, verá un icono de un globo en la parte inferior derecha de su pantalla que dice "Interpretación". Haga clic aquí y seleccione español. Si está utilizando la aplicación en un iPad o un teléfono, busque el menú de tres puntos arriba. Haga clic en "Interpretación de idiomas" y seleccione español. Asegúrese de seleccionar también "Silenciar el audio original" para no tener dos idiomas en el huido. Gracias. Good afternoon. In order to facilitate language access, we'll be providing interpretation between English and Spanish. My name is Steven Watson. My partner in the other room is Regina Santos. We'll be providing simultaneous interpretation for those in person if necessary and for those joining us over Zoom. If you're on Zoom, the instructions to access interpretation in Spanish. If you're using a computer, you'll see a globe icon at the bottom right that says "Interpretación". Please click that and select "Spanish". If you're using the Zoom app on an iPad or phone, look for the three-dot menu. Select "Language Interpretation" and choose "Spanish". Also make sure to mute the original audio so you don't have two languages in your ear. Thank you very much. A quick reminder to speak directly into the microphone and at a moderate pace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, Mr. Porter, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
As we rise, many of us were able to go through areas that had beautiful spring flowers. Spring, which is a season of renewal. The season of Easter, standing for hope. Season of Passover, standing for our memories of the past. And this year, the season of Ramadan, an expression of faith. So let us also renew our pledges to the people of this county, the children of this county, as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's very nice. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Porter. And now, Anna, roll call.
Hey, Mrs. Hardy, here. Mrs. Dany, here. Mrs. DeWort, here.
Ms. Erman. Mrs. Frost, here. Mr. Howell is absent. Mr. Porter?
In prison.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Howell has an excused absence. He's having some family time this week. So... It's spring break. Exactly. Changes to the agenda. We do have one small modification. There is a cover letter that we're going to include with the resolution on item 18. Did we get copies of those? Oh, okay. We will get copies of those by the time we get to item number 18. And I think at this point, we will go to President's comments. I mentioned about Joe, which is really too bad because I wanted to congratulate him on being selected as the 80th Man of the Year in the Woman and Man of the Year for Santa Barbara. I think the luncheon is going to be Wednesday, the 19th. And tickets are available, I'm sure, if you are able to go and congratulate Joe. And it's a wonderful honor, one well-deserved, and one that I'm sure he's shaking his head going, "I don't understand why me." We all know why him. And more congratulations. I had sent an email to the board, but I want to congratulate our superintendent, Ms. Salsedo, for her selection as the recipient of the Marcus Foster Memorial Award for Administrator of Excellence for the State of California from the AXA, the Administrative California... No, Association of California School Administrators. I... Yes. And there'll be a statewide ceremony in Sacramento on November 3rd. And I think the local region also has an event prior to that for all of their local recipients of recognition and awards. So, congratulations. Well-deserved. All right.
Well, kudos, kudos, kudos. I attended the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association meeting this morning. And I'm happy to report that as we went around the table, there's a lot of great news. There's some not-so-great news, but I felt that the great news overshadowed the not-so-great news. One of them being the collaboration of the three high schools in the Santa Maria area, producing the production of Chicago the last two weekends. And it was held at the Clark Center in Aurora Grande. Some of the concerns expressed this morning that kept popping up were special ed and how to accommodate that as we're seeing increased numbers. Michelle may want to add to that. She also attended. But those are the two things that were standouts for me. And I wish Joe were here. I was ready to hug him, and he's not here. So next month. Okay, I'm done.
Good afternoon. Yes, just to piggyback on the meeting from this morning, the only thing that really struck me was the special ed concerns about the budget, you know, the funding that it's going to take and that the younger the student is, they're coming in, you know, TK and kindergarten. And that was a surprise for me. I was not able, unfortunately, to attend the CCBE workshop that I was planning to attend. The day of travel, it was the most horrendous weather, and I decided not to go through that to get there. It was about a five-and-a-half-hour drive, so I decided not to drive. And, let's see. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. So, last month, I had mentioned that I had the honor of being on the Selection Committee for Teacher of the Year. So, on April the 18th and 19th, myself and other selection committee, along with the SB CEO, administrative staff, Steve Keithley and Ann Flores, are going to be visiting the schools and the teachers and all of the five finalists. So, after reading the applications and learning about the teachers, I'm really excited to be a part of this. I'm looking forward to meeting the teachers and looking forward to seeing the students. And it will come full circle because in May, we're going to be able to announce the winner of the Teacher of the Year Award. So... And I did double-check beforehand that it was okay to give this information out to you guys. So, I'm not divulging any information. I'm not supposed to. So, yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know that and look forward to next month where we can announce the winner.
Very much. I am so envious because when I was on the committee, it was during COVID, and we had to do the selection on Zoom. So, we were not able to go to the classrooms. And I would have loved to have seen some of those demonstrations in the classroom rather than limited to the Zoom presentation, so...
Sure. I just tag on to that. It was pre-COVID. It was probably one of the most fabulous experiences I've had as a board member. Meeting and being out in the community with seeing these teachers. It's an arduous process for the teachers just to submit their applications. And then, you know, it's pages and pages, and they have to submit it. They're recommended by their school, but they're required to submit the application. But it really is, it's such a gratifying experience. And I keep telling Steve, "When do I get to do it again?"
I agree. And he does... Keithley does a wonderful job running that program. Absolutely wonderful. Okay, do we have any public comments today? Nope. Okay, then we will move right along. Dr. Salsedo, would you like to take it from here?
I would love to. Thank you so much and good afternoon, everyone.
So, great to see all of you. And thank you so much to the board. I want to just pause and say thank you. As I look at our board here today, we see each other actually in between board meetings with all of the many committees that you're so fully participating on. And just want to say thank you. There's a lot of work that happens behind the scene, and it means so much to have your participation. Thank you. We have Student Advisory Council presentations today. At 2:20, we said to some of the students, and I just feel like some might just scoot right in at maybe 2:19. So, I'm wondering if we could hold that one for just a few minutes. And Edwin Weaver is here for his presentation, and I'm ready for my superintendent's report. So, which of those would you prefer that we move ahead before the Student Advisory Council?
I would not want to cut Mr. Weaver and Friday night in Santa Maria short on your presentation. And pardon, don't take this the wrong way, but I feel like we can interrupt you. Sorry. I feel that we...
I see. Okay.
So, how about you begin? We'll cut you off at 2:20.
I would be glad to. So, I'll go ahead and proceed with my superintendent's report then first. And let me adjust my work here. All right. In previous reports, I usually pause and just ask for questions before I make some additions. But in this case, I'm hoping to run a few... Run over just a few things together. So, as I go to the report in the board book, first wanted to make a really quick comment about the table that you see on student enrollment. In the past, we've been writing it as a bit of a narrative. And just about a month ago, we switched now to make it a chart so you can see time over time over the month. So, I wanted you to know that. The reason why in September, there are some blank spaces there is because it was after September that we started asking for the other programs, Special Education and ECE, to include numbers there. So, that's why it's blank, but you'll just see that table has turned. With that, I'd like to now turn to the Administrative Services Division and ask Steven Torres and Mary Beth Gallus to come up to the podium because we've got a few announcements under that Administrative Services Division place. One is to introduce our new Director of Facilities. Another one, we had promised to give you an update on the Hope Center repair. The board had passed a resolution to go forward with that work, so we wanted to give you that update. And then also a preview of what will come forward to the board for the first time in a long time, I think. So, we wanted to give you a primer before bringing it forward next month. So, those are three items, and I'm going to direct it over to Steve Torres, our Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services, first. Thank you, Steve.
Good afternoon. And, yeah, first and most kind of importantly and excitingly, I want to introduce our new Director of Facilities, Mary Beth Gallus. She comes to us with over 20 years of experience in facilities management. Most recently, she was at Santa Barbara, Santa Maria Joint Union High School District, where she was the facilities planner, and she played an integral role in the building of their CTE Center, as well as the new buildings that are on the Santa Maria High School site. So, in addition to the experience, she also just brings a passion, I think, a unique passion, for really looking at the work that she does on the schools through the lens of the needs of the students and faculty. So, really appreciate that. She started March 20th, and she's just kind of jumped right in and hit the ground running, and she's everybody's new best friend. And so, she's embracing the work and everything that's in front of her. So, really excited to have her. So, I'll let Mary Beth say a couple words.
Thank you so much. I'm genuinely thrilled to be here. It is an honor to be a part of the Santa Barbara County Education Office. I have been so impressed prior to coming here with the staff that I interacted with. And I've been just sort of universally impressed by the enthusiasm and the talents of the new people I've met for their programs. And I'm... We're just all so eager to lend our support to seeing those programs be successful. So, thank you.
Okay. So, the second item was the update on the Hope Center. And so, unfortunately, the component of the work that had to do with the actual, you know, moisture and mold, that process was going as planned. However, I talked last time about doing HVAC work in order to ensure that the air quality could be sustained once the center reopened. During... Or prior to the steam cleaning of the air ducts, they did an inspection, identified some material that might contain asbestos or that's known to contain asbestos. They tested it, and unfortunately, it did contain that. So, we've gone through our process of reporting that to the county, and we have this like 14-day waiting period, and then we can have it removed. So, we have a plan in place for that. It's just delayed everything by about two to three weeks. So, this is an unforeseen circumstance. But again, ultimately, our plan here is to ensure the safety of the staff when they return. And this is an important step, so we'll be able to proceed with this. And so, that being said, I will definitely provide another update. I'm sure that's warranted for the next meeting since the project is not complete yet. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay. And then last is, as a component of facilities, we have been... Next month, the plan is to bring forward some information about the leases that SBCEO has for programs within ECE and Special Education. It's probably about 11 properties or so, and they are typically offices or classrooms, kind of smaller spaces that support programs and services that we provide in Lompoc, Santa Maria, and San Inés Valley. And so, the information that we'll provide will kind of give you an overview of all of those lease spaces, including the terms of the leases, the programs that are running those spaces, the lease amounts, and some additional information like that. So, just wanted to give you a heads-up on that since we were addressing a couple of other facilities items today. Any other questions?
I just want to make a note on that. One of the areas of my interest in the leases is... And this might be too much to add at this time. But in the future, one of the things that I'm interested in is to do a market comparison of square footage per foot of lease rent per square foot that we're paying compared to market in some of these areas. So, again, not too much to throw at it for this time, but in the future, as we deal with leases, that's one of the things I will definitely want to be looking at.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. I think that's, you know, a column that could be added in kind of an average cost depending on the area, for sure. Thank you.
All right. So, continuing on with the superintendent's report, a few items. On page two, teacher programs, we talk about many, many things that are happening. But one of them is the education celebration that will occur on May 11th in Bulton at the Marriott. That's okay. Yeah, it's good. Take that as a celebratory... Yeah. So, the invitation was actually just hot off the presses, I think. So, if we can pass those out to the board, they'll come to the public at a later time. But for now, here's the invitation to you. And at a subsequent board meeting next month, perhaps we can ask for approval in terms of expenditures for the board. But May 11th, and one of the educators who will be featured will be the Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year. But of course, the Crystal Apple recipients and many, many teacher grant recipients will be there as well. So, we wanted to extend that invitation to you. All right. And moving forward, one of the major reported items at the Santa Barbara County School Boards Association from different districts were all of these featured events by students and recognition. So, I too wanted to pause on our student events and say, "My goodness, there have been many, many during the spring season." And I want to say to Ellen Berger, a sincere thank you for being present at every single one of these events, but also organizing the team to be there to make sure that things run smoothly on behalf of all the children. So, thank you. Thank you so much, Ellen, and your team. Moving forward to E. Modernari, it's on. It's back in person. You see the dates there, May 27th, 28th, and 29th. Of course, want to extend the invitation to see you there. It's always a risk. Do you wait till Monday? Some years, they've rained away, you know? Or do you go early? It's just a... It's a risk. But I think no matter which day you go, it's a lot of fun. And of course, the proceeds are... Go back directly into classrooms for Art Across the County. And should any of the county board members wish to be a part of a sponsored square from SBCEO, the county board, if you wouldn't mind contacting Bridget Boblitz, just as a voluntary contribution, if you'd like, then we'll put together a square this year on our behalf, yeah, for the E. Modernari. Moving forward then, on page six, the Juvenile Court and Community Schools under the Student Behavioral Health Incentive Program. Happy that we're providing all of these additional supports. The year was wrong, and we put that into an email for you. It was an assessment conducted not in September 2019, but actually in 2022. So, I wanted to make that correction for you. And then finally, additions that are not part of the actual report, but just information for you. One, Capital Advisors is coming to SBCEO's auditorium for their May revise in person. It's from 9:00 to 11:00 on May 26th here at SBCEO. The Capital Advisors will also provide virtual experiences as well. They're hosted by other counties, but anyone is invited to attend. And the virtual options are on May 30th and 31st, again, on the May revise. On the May revise, we're really leaning forward into what are the changes? Property taxes revenue do not seem to be at the exact rate that we thought in January. So, what will that mean for transitional kindergarten? What will that mean for extended learning? What will that mean for any of the contributions to UPK all the way through 12? So, we're really leaning forward on the May revise. A second, shifting now to Juvenile Court and Community Schools. So, in Juvenile Court and Community Schools, Chief Tanya Heitman had been the probation chief for many years, and now Holly Benton is taking over as chief. And as the transition has occurred throughout some weeks and months, our team and the probation team have been really working on, you know, the continuous educational programs that are really needed for all the students. And it's been a bit bumpy. It's been a bit bumpy and tricky. It has not really been smooth and continuous. There have been days where, for example, as a reality, the probation staff have been understaffed and unable to take students to school, for example, which is a... It's a problem that we have to solve. We've got to come together to solve. So, our team, including Renee Wheeler, who's not here today, but Renee Wheeler, whom you all know, Bridget Boblitz, Mari Baptista, Kirsten Escobedo for the Special Education supports, have been working really hard with the probation team. And we've come to a point where we need to kind of meet even more, to the lack of better word, deeply eye-to-eye together, the same individuals I shared with you just now, plus Austin and myself. We'll be meeting with Holly in one week, actually, a week from today, I believe, is next week, in Santa Maria. And I... So that we can come to some really important agreements on how we together provide the supports for education for our students. I'm mostly concerned with staff and student safety. Probation staff, teaching staff, classified staff, student staff, all of the safety requirements and the educational programming that gets impeded when students are not in school or when there's just an interruption to their day. So, those are the items that we'll be working toward. I say all of this to the board because there could be a time, maybe sooner, maybe later, that I ask the board to participate in some of these meetings as well. I'm asking for you... Not your... Do not include your participation in this time. I feel like we really want to work it out with staff. But I wanted to just lay that groundwork, that it's been a little tricky, and we've been working on it. We really have aims for smooth experiences, but for all... For many, many reasons, it's been a little bit bumpy. Okay?
Is the court also directly involved or just the probation director?
You know what? Let me turn to my staff and see if the courts at this point have been involved because just to make sure that I know if they have or have not been. And then we'll... Let me talk about who's coming on next week.
Because that's the chain of command, right?
That's right.
Make sure I understand.
Yeah. Let me just make sure. No, not... Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, just to complete out the items on the list, wanted to lift up the fact that fentanyl poisoning has been a real problematic area for the county, of course. Today's in the meeting that we were talking about from the County School Boards meeting, Santa Maria Joint Union High School District Board trustee talked about the fentanyl overdoses in Santa Maria Joint Union High School District. The concern, of course, is county-wide. But he did say, if I heard it correctly, that a student passed away this week. This week at home as a result of this. But these incidences have been occurring on campus as well. So, there's a real need to continue to focus on prevention education, but also information out to the community. And then finally, I'll say that there have been, again, incidents of mass shootings, acts of violence across the country, in our schools. It's affecting children. It's affecting all of us. And so, I think myself and our team, our county's superintendents are really looking at a concerted effort with law enforcement to focus in on school safety together. And so, I'll come back with more information for you on that, but we're really working together. I'm right now working with the FBI. I'm working with the sheriff's team. I'm working with our superintendents to come with... Come together on a comprehensive and common supports for schools and safety. With that, I'll stop there and see if there's any questions from the board on my superintendent's report. Yes, Mrs. DeWort?
I just really appreciate all the work that's been in this report. And I know it's a lot of work to put it all together, but it's really helpful. And I appreciate the focus on literacy and the science of reading.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And then also career tech education. Thank you so much, everyone, for the work you're doing. I appreciate that you are striving to find creative ways to engage these children. And I think that the idea of the manufacturing class sounds awesome. And I even clicked on the link to look at the skateboard, and it didn't work. I couldn't see it. So, I was ready. So, I tried a couple times, but I just wanted to know how much I appreciate that work you do.
Thank you. Maybe we'll bring a skateboard next time. Experiential board meeting in May. Thank you very much.
Okay, then let's move right along. We'll go back.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Well, I'm so excited to share with the board two of our students who are part of the Student Advisory Council meeting. And I'm going to bring you up to the podium in just a moment. The board has heard, and some of the staff have heard before, but for the whole group, want to say, 17 outstanding students were part of the inaugural Student Advisory Council for Santa Barbara County. And I'm so pleased that the students have had such a diverse perspectives, diverse experiences, not all cut from the same cloth at all. And yet, we came together with some common threads of what's needed in schools, common threads about what's helpful in schools. It's fascinating, from carpentaria to Santa Maria, Lompoc, Santa Barbara, San Inés. We talk about mental health concerns quite a bit. We talk about student engagement and teachers and what really works in schools. So, just a tremendous experience. And so, today with us, we have Ada... Ada Delgoyado, senior in San Inés. We have Dawson Kelly, a senior at San Marcos High School. We also have invited the superintendent for both districts. We have one on spring... Uh, we have one on spring break, so Andrew Schrab could not make it. And we totally understand that people do need some time off, glad you're here. Dr. Hilda Maldonado from Santa Barbara Unified School District here. Thank you so much, Hilda, for being here. Edzu Kelly, who's the um, communications director from Santa Barbara Unified is also is here as well. And so to usher you in, students, I'm going to come up to the podium and then how about we meet up there? Okay, so Ada and... Okay, so we'll use this podium and we've got to really use that mic. Um, so I've asked the students a couple of prepared questions and then, what was that? No, okay. A couple of prepared questions. And I would love to invite the board to ask questions as well and the students to ask, ask questions as well. But really ask them to share about, you know, what was interesting about the Student Advisory Council that motivated you to apply? Uh, we asked them, well, gosh, all right, if you had a magic wand, what might you shift in education? What might you make sure every student has access to? And also, what are something that's just amazing in schools? Something amazing for you that you want to share with the board? So I first will turn it over to Ada and then to Dawson. Okay, great, thank you.
Um, so my name's Ada Delgoyado. I'm a senior at San Ynez High School. Um, what motivated me to join the Advisory Council was that um, I'm a very involved student on campus. I am, I'm a A S B president. Um, I have founded my own club as Women Empowered. I'm also part of multiple committees as a student representative. And so um, my principal and my inclusion coordinator um, came to me with the opportunity and it felt very validating and fulfilling to see that other people on campus were seeing the effort that I was making um, on campus. Something that I wish all students had access to, um, I think not every administration is perfect, and I don't think administration is ever going to be perfect. Um, and I don't think a student advisory council is ever going to fix that, right? Um, but I do think if an administration is perpetually failing in its responsibility to make sure students feel safe and welcomed and loved and accepted on our campus, there's an issue. Um, you know, it's not only a San Ynez issue, you know, we're not the only school getting articles written about us. But that doesn't mean it's not happening at other schools, you know. And this advisory council, I've been able to realize that it's happening on high schools all across the county. Um, and it's really disheartening. Uh, you know, I'm out of the door in two months, but what's going to happen to these students that are staying for another four years and are coming through the door? It's really, it's really sad. Um, something that I'm grateful for at my school is um, so I'm a first generation Mexican-American. So a lot of the times I find myself having to do things myself. Um, I don't really have, you know, help because I'm doing it for the first time. Um, and so there is a teacher on campus, his name's Mr. Wolf, his, Mr. Greg Wolf. Um, and he's helped me a lot. You know, he's taught me some really invaluable lessons that I'm probably going to take for, with me for the rest of my life. Um, he is one of the most genuine, caring, awesome people that I've ever met. Uh, you know, and he's not only my teacher, but he's my mentor and he's also grown to be a friend. Um, so I'm really grateful for him for always being there for not only me, but all of his students. So yeah, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Sorry, kind of recovering from a sickness, but we're better. My name is Dawson Kelly. Um, and the reason I joined the advisory board is I was a student board member for the Santa Barbara Unified School District. So I got a pretty good understanding of how board policy worked on a district level and I wanted to learn more about it um, on a county level and also just to learn from different perspectives from people throughout the county. Um, and it was clear to me that a lot of our problems are countywide and affect the schools in different ways. So if I had a magic wand, and I think that you don't even need a magic wand to achieve this, but I think that our schools need a mandated um, mental health curriculum in schools that is consistent and up to date um, and changes on a yearly basis. Right now, it's one in five and it's getting closer to one in four students and individuals as a whole that have a mental illness and deal with a mental illness. And we have a culture, not only in my generation, but in the world as a whole, of things that are making our mental health worse and worse on a daily basis. We are on our phones on average eight hours a day. We are lacking the recommended amount of sleep. Eighty percent of students are not getting the eight hours that are recommended. Um, substance abuse is common and normalized. Uh, it's hard to know what the right thing to do is because our culture on what makes us mentally well is declining. I think that we need, we need to talk about these things in school. And when I think about when you're giving a student a high school diploma and what you think they need when they're pushed into the outside world, an understanding of how to deal with their own mental health and their peers' mental health is imperative. And I have not seen that in our system. It's something that we need now more than ever before. We don't even know what is mentally right and what is not mentally right. Um, so I think working towards that, creating a culture where it can be talked about. This will have a ripple effect if we're talking about it in schools and the people that are suffering can have the conversations that need to take place. So that'd be the thing that I wish we would have in schools and resources that would go along with that. I think uh, an impactful thing that I've had with teachers um, and things that I'm grateful about within my school are the teachers that make a committed effort to have real connections and real relationships with students. Um, I think the teachers that have taught me the most have been the ones that taught me how to be a better person rather than be better at math, English, reading. These interpersonal skills that I developed by having genuine relationships with teachers are going to be the things that carry outside of my life and into high school and, or in, outside of high school onto the rest of the world. Um, those things, those lessons pay dividends. And the teachers that make a conscious effort to do that and create a classroom environment that allows to have those conversations, it's incredible. Um, and also the ones that focus on the intrinsic value of learning instead of this is what you have to do to get an A, this is what you have to do to get a B. We're kind of stuck in this cycle and I find myself thinking, oh, should I have to do this homework assignment? How much of this do I need to know to get on the test? Not, how will these things play into my real life? And what actual knowledge am I getting from this material? So the teachers that make an effort to go against the grain in a way and not think about the letter grade and not have that be the main focus on why you need to learn these things, really the intrinsic value. So those teachers that make that effort, I'm grateful for. Thank you.
Um, my name's Hannah Huang and I'm a junior at Dos Pueblos.
Yep. Okay.
Um, so what motivated me to be a part of this council is, uh, well, my uh, activities advisor at my school, Scott Gutentag, um, suggested that I would be a part of the council because he saw like the effort that I was putting in to speak up on campus. And um, I'm also a class officer, so he saw like the work I was putting in and towards of like school spirit and getting involved in general. And if I had a magic wand, I would change the stigma towards mental health because I'm pretty sure Dawson was explaining as well. But there's, I feel like there's a crisis, especially after COVID, that um, students are struggling academically and in their personal lives. And I feel like we need to bridge the gap between our um, personal lives and our lives at school in order to um, solve, or not solve, but like better this, better our attitude towards mental health. And um, personally at D P, we have a loness center. Um, so I feel like if we could implement this countywide, um, like especially also in like junior highs and elementary schools, um, starting young and focusing on um, ways to um, like de-stress, um, especially when we're young, can um, help us have better success in high school when things get very stressful. Um, and learning how to cope with like excess workload or like lots of extracurriculars would be very helpful to start um, like discussing those um, strategies from a younger age. And something that I appreciate about my school is I feel like we have a lot of programs which help students um, get connected with their peers. And if they need counseling, we also offer those services. So I feel like Dos Pueblos in particular does a very good job. And so I feel like we should focus on implementing the programs that D P has to countywide. And yeah.
Um, my name is Ava Shabastari. I go to Dos Pueblos High School with Hannah. Um, I was initially interested in this council because I was looking for ways to make change in my community and our school district, like along the county. Um, and it seemed like the perfect opportunity to do so. If I had a magic wand, I would make sure that all students had access to mental health support. D P, like Hannah was saying, does a really good job of offering our students programs and resources to get the help that they need. But after being a part of the council, I learned that not all schools in our county have access to stuff like that for their students. So I think implementing something countywide would be really beneficial to students. Um, something that I'm grateful for about D P is that how my school is constantly offering um, like resources for students to join, to get involved in their community and to display like their leadership skills. Um, uh, that's actually how I found out about this council through our activities director, like Hannah said, because I'm also a class officer. Um, so yeah, I think it's just like really important that students have those opportunities and they're aware of those opportunities so that they can get involved. Thank you.
Insert here and um, first I'm going to um, give Dr. Maldonado a, a little bit of on-ramp space to say I'm going to call you up in just a moment. If you'd like to say something in a few minutes. I didn't say that before, so I'll do that now. Um, and open it up if there's questions for the board too. But I did want to say that um, today we have three, two students from Dos Pueblos, one from San Marcos and one from San Ynez. On the council in, in total, there are about five or six from Santa Maria together. There are about um, four from Santa Barbara, about four from San Ynez. So they're just different uh, variations throughout the county um, to make up seventeen. Um, we, in this year, we had tenth grade, eleventh grade and twelfth graders participate. Um, Ada and um, Dawson are seniors. And then behind me are sophomores, right? No, excuse me, juniors. So sorry. Wow, I got to re, re-back up and go back in. I'm really sorry. And soon to be seniors, actually. Um, sorry about that. But I just appreciate the different grade levels, actually, and perspectives. Ada brought up the fact that in two months, you'll be exiting out the door, as you said. And um, that's a very impactful statement to hear. Um, so let me see if there's any questions from the board for the students and then we'll ask Dr. Maldonado.
I don't have any questions. I'm just so impressed with the caliber of articulation, your concerns. There's obviously a recurring theme. Uh, we've been hearing it here in presentations in our board meetings. And you just put the exclamation point on it. So thank you for your um, very prudent and wise consideration for your comments. Thank you. And Susan, kudos to you for developing this council. I think it's the most positive thing to get the input from the students as well. We can implement all kinds of policy, but if we don't go to the users, we're dead in the water. So, thank you.
Um, thank you. I, I'm so impressed and honored to be here to see this wonderful articulate group of speakers. I am so, but I'm so curious about um, Dawson and Ada. How, where your, what your plans are for the, for next year, yes, after high school?
Uh, so I... I'm planning to go to Cal Poly Slow and major in architectural engineering.
Uh, I'm debating between Berkeley or UCLA. Um, and I'm studying philosophy. Um, and then depending on if I get off a waitlist, like my college, plans could change. That's in between.
Question. I just, again, to what Maggie was saying, um, I'm so impressed uh, with your comments and with your insight. And again, as Maggie was saying, I was like, yes, I second that, I second that. In terms of the issues or the concerns, subjects around mental health, also the idea of safety, the intrinsic values that you're learning are so important. And I was taking notes because any way that we can push forward these ideas and, and are so, are important for us because you, your voice and what you're seeing and what you're seeing is what we need to implement real change. And um, I love quotes, but I always end up butchering them, so I was trying to find a quote. But one of um, my favorites is um, a quote uh, by Albert Einstein that says, "We cannot m- make effective change using the same thoughts that we use to create the problems that we have." Again, I butchered it, but the idea is there. So um, just thinking like, how can we make these positive changes and using different ways of thinking? And your ideas and your values and your input will help us to do that. So thank you again.
Um, similar to what you said, you know, us, you know, nobody knows a school campus better than its students. And I think a point that I was trying to make was that um, my administration in particular is failing to see that, remember that our school campus is for students and not for parents and is therefore acting like it is. And, you know, it's hard to incite change when our administration is turning our backs to us. So we can try as hard as we want, we can, you know, one step forward, but five steps back. So, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments and all of your comments today. Um, uh, I was going to say something and then I lost my train. No, 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 I just appreciate, I mean, what I was going to say in response to what you were saying is one of the s- the outcomes we were looking for at the start was just an opportunity to elevate and amplify the voices of students um, and their perspectives and their experiences across the county. And so I really appreciate that all have, have done so. In the course of the Student Advisory Council, um, there have been several facilitators at S B C O online. And we made sure that in breakout sessions, we'd have one of us in all of the breakouts. And I, I can, I noticed that at the beginning, we pretty were tight. You know, let's really control these conversations, you know? And as we loosened up, we learned more. And as we loosened up what the themes that came across, the students could share. You know what? That's happening here too. Oh, this is what we have. So I just want to say that that's been really successful and it's all because of you, the students. Um, and uh, an individual I sought counsel from before starting this uh, council is Dr. Maldonado because she had a San Barbara Unified School District Student Advisory Council in her district. I also talked with L A um, county superintendent who had a Los Angeles County uh, Student Advisory Council as well before starting ours. So with that, I'd like to give a final word to Dr. Maldonado. Yes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon. It's a pleasure to meet you in my third year in Santa Barbara, believe it or not. And I didn't, I had to find help getting into this room. So it just speaks to what we've been through in, in a pandemic world. I arrived in July twenty twenty as the new superintendent, the proud superintendent of Santa Barbara Unified. And I am proud to stand beside Dawson, Hannah and Ava. But Dawson was my very first student board member. And uh, he came the second year that I got here as a superintendent. And so he is the first student board member for Santa Barbara Unified. And right now we have Kavya Suresh from San Marcos High School. And this next month, we'll be selecting the next student board member. So we're going on to number three. Uh, one of the things that is important for me, I very much connected to your story because I am a first generation college graduate in my family as well. And I am the first, first, first for a lot of things. And it's very difficult to be the first. I am the second woman. Uh, I am the second woman superintendent for Santa Barbara Unified, the first immigrant superintendent. So there's a lot of firsts there that I connect with, and I think it's so important for me to always have the students at the center of everything that we do. And, um, I have learned so much from Dawson. Uh, and I think that, uh, even though he won't get to see it because the bureaucracy always moves so slow, slower than we want to, uh, we are, uh, going to be working on a relationship framework that we will be bringing to all our staff. Uh, it's not a mental health curriculum per se, but it is a relationship framework that we'll be using with all our staff to begin to deal with because as we train students, we also need to train teachers. And our teachers also need help on how to talk about mental health because I'm 58 and I know we never talked about it. And even in my culture, it's something that's not easy to talk about. And so I need to recognize all the layers of people that I need to get to, to help get to what Dawson's dream is about, which I also share. Um, that is so important and that is something that we need to think about as we teach 21st century learners. And that is what I always try to keep at the forefront, uh, of my thinking as well. So I just appreciate Dr. Salcedo also for, um, her support. For those of you that don't know, I couldn't survive without our county superintendent either. And I'm so grateful that she also helped bring me into the fold, to the community, to understanding all of what it takes to be here. So thank you, but more than important, and I am super hopeful about the future because of them. And so thank you very much.
It's still on. It's hot. Okay. So I have a few awards that I'd like to hand out in recognition of your work. I'm trying to see everyone. It's an awkward position. So thank you. This is for you, Ada. This is for you, Dawson. This is for you, Hannah. All right, thank you all.
Thank you for inviting us.
Absolutely. First time in person that we're seeing each other. So I'm like, you know, savoring the moment. I know that Kami Barnwell would love to get a photo, so let's listen to her direction.
That was refreshing. And I too feel more positive about the future now. Thank you. Thank you for the boost. Um, and now we have a presentation.
Yes.
Would you like to do the introductions?
I would love to do the introduction as I invite Edwin Bieber up to the podium. I knew you were right there if I looked.
Oh, private note.
You reside anywhere near the Santa Maria Valley, you know Edwin as a leader. Um, you've resided in Santa Maria Valley for, gosh, 14 years and been the executive director now for eight, right?
Nine.
Eight, nine. Okay, got it. Yes. So, um, Edwin wears several hats really as executive director for Fighting Back. And one of the reasons we invited him here, um, not only does he do a plethora of work, um, in, for Fighting Back, but he also is contracted through Santa Barbara County Education Office to deliver the TOPE, is what we called it, Tobacco Use Prevention Education, um, supports for Santa Barbara County. And since he is a contracted, um, contracts with us to do that, I thought we would share about his services to the county and his reach throughout Santa Barbara County. So with that, we'll turn it over to Edwin.
Thank you so much. It's so great to be here. Um, is the mic okay? Yeah, okay. Because I don't want them flashing their little card at me. So that makes me nervous. So it's, it's really an honor to be here. So I want to, uh, honor a couple of people first is Lorraine Waldou. She was the Tobacco Use Prevention Education person before me for 34 years. Right? And she and Don Dunn, who did tobacco prevention for, um, the Public Health Department for 25 years, were kind of the, the anchors to tobacco prevention. And so when the, uh, contract came up for bid, we bid on it as an agency and were able to be awarded in the competitive bid to be your TO- TOPE coordinator. Um, and so what does that mean? Uh, there we go. So just a little, I, I need to give you a framework. So in Santa Bar- in California, there are two propositions, Proposition 99 and Proposition 56, that tax tobacco. And so they, the, the state takes that money, um, and they say, let's keep kids away from tobacco with this money. And so they divide the money between public health and the schools, the CDE, California Department of Education. And that overriding body of, uh, researchers and folks are called TEROC, right? T E R O C. And they're in charge of all the programs, either the Public Health Department programs and the school programs. And the school programs are called TOPE. And so Tobacco Use Prevention and Education, every county has one. And it just depends on the local districts as to what they want to do with the money. Um, but there are some caveats. And so for, um, all, all districts get a, uh, what's called, uh, a technical advise- advisor position. So that's me. I, I get a, a very small amount from the state to be the technical advisor for the county. Then, um, we can decide if we want to as a district or as a, as a county to apply for tier one funds or tier two funds. So when I arrived, we only had the technical advance grant and that was it. It was very little money. There wasn't a lot of, um, interest, quite frankly. But things changed, including the need to talk about vaping. That all of a sudden, we had a vaping epidemic with the invention of Jules. Schools were going, what are we gonna do? Everybody's smoking these electronic devices. We need to stop them. And so we started looking hard at the TOPE tier two services. Um, in order to, uh, a, a district or a school to apply for the monies, they have to do a couple of things. They have to be called tobacco free. And so I'm the technical person who can certify them. That means no smoking of any kind on any properties. Uh, employee and student handbooks have to have no smoking policies. They can't receive any industry funding. Um, they have to have signage that is appropriate and certified. And they all have to take the California Healthy Kids Survey every two years. So if a school district says, we'll do those things, then they can apply. Now, the tier two services, they also are restrictive in that you have to have certain elements for all applications. You have to have some kind of prevention through education and that education has to be, um, evidence-based or evidence-informed education. You have to have a youth development component. You have to have some kind of alternative to suspension. So if a young person is found with this product on campus, you have to give them an opportunity to be educated around the harms of it as part of a discipline plan. Um, there has to be a cessation component. And then we have to hire an outside evaluator. So we were able to talk to Dr. Jill Sharkey. She's our evaluator at UCSB. Um, so what programs did we put into place? Well, let's talk about first. So we applied and were awarded in 2020, uh, a three-year grant. However, COVID broke out and it was a horrible time to try to start something new. Nobody wanted to do anything other than keep kids safe. Nobody wanted any conversations around tobacco. But we tried. And so those were the districts that before the pandemic, so, you know, we applied in the, in the fall of, uh, I mean, in the spring of 2019, we were awarded and these districts said, we want these services. We're having a problem with vaping on campus. Um, so that meant 32,000 students were going to be serviced, so, because it's only grade six through 12. Um, and then that was the amount. And so just to be clear, all that money comes in from tobacco tax. You don't have to match it here. You don't have to put any money in. It's out there for any school district to go out and ask for and to implement in their districts. The districts made it really clear, we, we want the services, but we don't want any to be, we want you to do the service, basically. We don't want to have to hire anybody or do anything. Can you provide the service? And we said, sure. So, um, we hired, uh, four full-time people. Um, so that's one for South County, one for Mid County, and two for North County. And that was based on the amount of students per, and needed, and that include Juvenile Hall and Fitzgerald. Um, so the programs, the prevention program we adopted was the Stanford Toolkit. The youth development, uh, we do is called the FAT Clubs. We have Alternatives to Suspension, which is our in-depth program. We have a cessation curriculum, which is NOT, which is through the American Lung Association. And then we do family and community engagement through, uh, presentations and we do a prevention summit every year. So let's break this down. So the Stanford Toolkit, originally before COVID, we were gonna have our DARE officers present this information and they were really excited to do, do that. And then they went away. Uh, the SROs were not gonna be allowed to be on campus because there weren't, well, the students weren't on campus and they weren't gonna do DARE online. And so we, we made a shift and we started delivering these services, a 50-minute presentation, either virtually or in person. We were able to do this over the last three years to 12,491 students. Were able to do presentations to parents, 839 parents. And then, of course, school administrations, uh, served were, school staff, 149. Uh, so here are our FAT Clubs. This was, uh, this year, Brandon, one of our tobacco preventionists, started this club at Pioneer Valley High School. Had 102 students show up the first day. It was crazy. It was like, where are all these kids coming from? But it was a lot of fun. Um, and then, uh, in Dos Pueblos, this is the morning announcements. Um, they were able to, uh, invite everybody to the FAT Club at, at Dos Pueblos. Um, and then, uh, we were able to take the FAT Club up to Sacramento. Um, Sacramento had a conference, the Youth Quest Advocacy Teen Conference. And so these students from Pioneer Valley and Dos Pueblos FAT Club were able to go up and meet with our local legislator. Uh, Gary, uh, Greg Hart's office was able to invite us and, and we met with him, talked to him about the dangers of tobacco and, and see if we couldn't get some support legislatively. We also met with a legislative, uh, uh, director, Caitlin Voorhees. Caitlin went to school in, in the Santa Maria Valley and then also, uh, to, at Hancock. And so she's now alleged as, uh, director at, uh, District 21. So she was able to meet with them and talk to them about legislation and how it works. So they had a lot of fun there. And that was just recently. So we also do a lot of social media. Young people are on social media, so we do a lot of social media campaigns. You'll see that we're on there as well as the County Education Office. Uh, we are able to do, uh, get news reports and have news items talked about our work that we're doing. Really to get the message out that these products are very dangerous and don't belong in children's hands. The in-depth club is our Alternative to Suspension. So, uh, what that means, if you're found with a product on campus, your, uh, administration can, uh, you know, ask you to, as part of a discipline plan, to go through one of our classes. It's four 40-minute sessions. Um, the groups can be as small as one-to-one. We've had, we had a second grader actually vape i- in, in school. It was really sad. And so she got a one-to-one, uh, a little bit modified there. But yes, as part of her plan, really wanted to help her understand the danger she put herself and her friends in. Um, and then we have larger groups up to 10. And so we were able to serve 355 students with this po- program. And then the, the NOT program is a cessation program and it's voluntary. So after they go through the in-depth, if they still are having problems quitting, they can voluntarily sign up to do, uh, the NOT program, which is a lot more in-depth. It's 10 40-minute sessions. Um, and so that's for high school students. Um, we did some family engagement runs, activities for, for families. Uh, this is one of our color runs that we did. Uh, a different activity here, Day in the Park. And then we had three summits, two of them virtually and one in person. Uh, or actually, uh, one virtually, one in person, and we're still having to do our, our one next month. Um, and they were countywide summits. So we brought in guest speakers to talk to educators and to other administrations to talk about best practices around reducing drug and alcohol use. So what we did find though is one of the things a lot of schools were asking for help with was cannabis use. Because a lot of the electronic devices are, have cannabis in them. And when we wrote the grant, it wasn't, um, at that time, we weren't allowed to address cannabis using TOPE money. Um, now we can. But so what we did is we talked to the Department of Probation and asked them for some Prop 64 money. And we were able to establish another program. So when students are cited with cannabis on campus, they come to us through an education program and case management, as well as they have to do community service. And that's through, so I wanted to share that, even though that's not a TOPE program, I wanted you to understand that countywide, we're trying to address smoking in general. And so, um, so here's that program. It's for ages, uh, 12 to 17 so far. We've served 305 students. Um, depending on how much of the product they're carrying, um, the, the, they have to go to four to eight to 12 hours of class. Um, and then they also have to do community service. And this again is a probation-driven, uh, program. Um, but administrators on school campus can cite. And so it's not just, uh, the SROs or police officers who are writing these tickets. It's any administration, uh, who wants to take advantage of this as part of their discipline practice can say to a student, you know, you need to come to this class. Um, some of the things we found, here are things that have been found on campus that young people are carrying and using to deliver cannabis into their system. And so this is just some examples of the many things that we found. And again, uh, 305 students have gone through this program, uh, underage 18, uh, who have been, have found to be carrying cannabis on campus. All right. And so now we were successful in applying for another three years. We made some modifications. We felt very strongly that, um, we needed to emphasize junior high. Um, and so we will continue to use the evidence-based and evidence-informed practice from Stanford. But we're gonna do six sessions in the sixth grade, not just one 15-minute session. Because they like to talk. They, they have a lot, a lot of questions and they wanna, and it's all about, um, developing good habits, healthy habits. We heard about mental health's importance, about, uh, how to do stress relief and how to, uh, address anxiety using other things besides these products. The FAT Clubs, we're gonna move those to the junior highs because there's so many clubs on, at the high school campus. It's hard to get them going, but there's actually nothing, not a lot going on in junior high. So we think this is a really great opportunity to meet with them and develop and really have some great opportunity to interact with them early. Um, the in-depth, again, we'll do that instead of, uh, lieu of suspension. Um, continue to do that, but we're also gonna offer that to the junior highs because they're asking for it. Um, so we're gonna be doing that. And then cessation will continue to be voluntary. Uh, and that's for junior and high, and high school students. All right. So this is our team. Uh, so all of our contact information is on there. Uh, that's it. Any questions for, for us? Yes?
Um, the NOT program. 90% of either quit or reduced their usage, but I see eight students served.
Yeah.
Okay. But when you go to the cannabis side of it, it's 305. So there's an obvious, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
So, so the comparison might be better to the in-depth. The in-depth program, which is a cessation program, but it's early education, it's mandated by the school.
Okay.
The cannabis program is mandated by the Department of Probation.
Okay.
So the students have to go.
They don't have a choice.
Not as voluntary. I really want to go quit.
Okay.
A lot of young people quit through the early interventions. We've had a, a lot of success. In fact, we, one of our first young men who went through the in-depth, we ended up hiring to do the presentations in the schools as a, as a champion. We hire to do the presentations in the schools as a ch- as a champion. We hire six uh, high school students in the North County through another grant, and they go do a lot of the presentations for us, because they want to, you know, peers like to hear from peers.
A- and going back to the junior high level, um, formulating clubs on campus. I think that's a tough nut to crack, and sometimes it's the administrators that push back rather than the students want it. But the administrators don't. So I I really encourage that. I think it would be awesome.
Great. We'll encourage whoever you know in
I will.
To to let us in the door. We would love to be there.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, sir.
So what kind of interface do you have with county government and city governments? The reason I ask is, uh, some of those governments are intent on promoting cannabis, for example, and jamming storefronts into communities that don't even want them. So while they're doing that, on the one hand, are you just fighting a losing battle on the back end?
You know, that's a really great question. Um, we've been mostly early on active in Santa Maria. So we don't have any dispensaries in Santa Maria, um, because of our, one of our board members is the mayor. Um, so, but yeah, I mean, you know, Santa Barbara County has the second highest growth in of cannabis in the state of California. You know, uh, we compete with Montecito County back and forth. So it is a cash-bringing industry. But folks that I talk to in the industry also don't want it in the hands of youth. So we're trying to figure out that. But, um, back to your point, we do
Let me challenge that. If they're selling gummy bears with cannabis.
Thank you.
Remember back in the days, we we used bubble gum cigarettes? We thought it was cool.
Yeah.
Well, here we are, right?
Well, and I I I agree a hundred percent. There's actually legislation right now at Sacramento that is going to, it's called the Children Protection Act from Cannabis, which is going to be talking about gummies and flut- flavored drinks and all these products. So, but we do a legislative work. That's why we took the young people up to Sacramento. We also allow them to go to speak at city council and or county supervisors. You know, we were the first county. Well, Santa Maria did a flavor ban, so did, um, uh, Buellton did a flavor ban for tobacco. And then a county-wide flavor ban was enacted, and that was through this effort of TUPI, working with our local legislation and the students speaking up. So we were able to do be successful around tobacco. It's been harder around cannabis. But yeah, we're concerned.
Hi. Thank you for your work and for this information. It's it's very enlightening and I it's great to hear how you're going into the junior highs. I think especially there's a lot of, um, like more exposure and then that that it helps prepare the youth when they're going into high school. Um, I just wanted to know, does this interface at all with any kind of alcohol prevention? Um, any of those, uh, you know, product, not products, but programs or, um, initiatives?
Sure. So as, um, Superintendent Salcedo said, I wear many hats. So, uh, the Santa Barbara Behavioral Wellness has three divided the counting to three regions. And so each region has a coalition. So the southern region is run by Fam- Future Leaders of America. The middle region is run by People Self, uh, People Helping People. And the north region is Fight by Fighting Back, Santa Maria Valley. And so we have a coalition that meets every month and says, what are we concerned about youth? And substance abuse. So of course, we're concerned about fentanyl right now. But we're still, the number one product that children are having problems with is alcohol. And so we are very concerned with alcohol. We just had a social host ordinance established in Santa Maria, which we think is very helpful to help us combat early age alcohol use. Um, and so, yes, as a as a a preventionist, I'm very concerned about alcohol use. We're talking about tobacco, because that's what the interface between us, but as a dad and as a community member and as a person who runs an agency to prevent, uh, young people from losing their way, alcohol is forefront. Alcohol and marijuana are the two number one products that we're trying to help young people find other ways to self, and, oh, you know, the young people came up, said, we have issues around mental health and we don't know how to help ourselves. So we know that many of them are turning to self-medication using these products. So we teach them other ways to cope with stress. We work really hard with our mental health providers. Um, they're doing a campaign that started today. Uh, it's okay to not be okay. Um, and you know, it's a great promotion to help young people realize, get rid of the stigma of mental health. Um, and at the same time, making sure the folks who sell these products are doing it a legal and ethical way, so it doesn't reach out to our kids. We learned a lot from tobacco. Uh, we shouldn't be making the same mistakes again with other products that we're going to be introducing into our community. Did I answer your question? Okay. Yeah.
I'm so happy to hear that you're interfacing with People Helping People, because that was my question. They, um, they, at the recent city council meeting, solving city council meeting, there was a dispensary on the agenda that that was going to be approved. And there were about five students that came and spoke to the solving city council, and I think they were the most powerful speakers. And I think that was drove the decision not to include some expansion other than medical. Um, so I just want to applaud you that, you know, I think enlisting students to speak to adults is 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 a really great, um, um, plan.
Yeah, one of our students, one of our champions was on the council with with, uh, Superintendent Salcedo. And, um, she's passionate about keeping marijuana out of the lives of kids, because she's seen it impact her own family. I don't want to tell her story, but she's a very personal reason to be up there saying, keep these products away from kids. You know, it's it's really not okay to be marketing to them. Um, it's not healthy. It's not good for people.
Edwin, it's great to see you again, but it was also a very good presentation, very, very full of information and, um, awareness and things that are going on in our county that are kind of below the radar. You know, to where we, this is good to bring it to the forefront and to to let us be aware of of the things that we can um, the ways that we're trying to deal with some of these problems. Um, hearing our, some of our student council, or, yeah, student advisory committee members today speak about mental health and realizing that, um, the kids are just mimicking their parents. Their parents don't talk about mental health and they don't have tools to deal with it, and they turn to self-medication. And the kids know no other way either, so they do the same thing. So it's it's very integrated and, um, it's it's good to to tackle the problem, definitely.
Yeah, anecdotally, I I did have a mom early on in this journey of mine, um, about four or five years ago, say, hey, I need help. My son's using marijuana. And so, you know, it was a private conversation we're having, just the two of us. And I said, well, is anyone in the house using marijuana? And she said, yeah, me and my husband do. And I said, well, honestly, I think that's where we should start is, you know, if if we can stop that, figure out what it is that that provides you, because you're using it for a reason, right? And so let's talk about that and see if there are other ways you can manage whatever it is that you're 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 getting from it. Maybe that modeling will be a really great step in your house for everybody to agree that this isn't something we want to do. So, yeah, it's it's a hard conversation to have. Yeah. Oh, sorry.
One quick question.
Sure.
Edwin, thank you so much for this presentation. You had mentioned, uh, that one of the qualifiers was the Healthy Kids Survey must be administered.
Yes.
Are you using that to track progress and whether these programs have proved any level of efficacy?
Hundred percent. That is our data. Uh, we we've delivered all of our deliverables, but what we care about is impact. Are we making a difference? Unfortunately, we weren't able to get all of it done today. Um, we're in that evaluation, because we 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 tried to get everybody to finish before the end of winter break, uh, before the end of Chris- before Christmas break. And it didn't happen. And so we actually had a district go back, because their numbers weren't enough to actually be sig- statistically significantly. So we're getting that in. I've talked to West Ed. We should have a report. And that's, the way we do our reports, we have district reports, and then we have a North County, Mid County and South County report and countywide report. So then we can look at that data to see if we've had an impact. Um, it's really hard, because the twenty twenty, uh, twenty-one survey was such a mess, because it was in the middle of COVID. Um, and so we're really not feeling great about any. We go back to the data before that to see trends. But Jules, you know, was was in between. So it's, data's really tricky right now to find out, are we making a difference? But yes, we are looking hard. That's what Dr. Sharkey's job is. Is to hold us accountable, not only to just, do we do the work, but does the work make a difference?
Right. And because Healthy Kids every two years. So are you using any anecdotal information or youth voice? Because I noticed that was also a
Yeah, we use, we use all, we do surveys and they do
Pre-post.
Exit surveys. We do a six-month after the in-depth class.
Okay.
Are you using now? How much are you using, you know, uh, for the for the vaping? Um, and same with the cannabis, we do a six-month after evaluation to see if, did we stop? And did we continue to stop? We don't have the data yet.
Okay.
But we're going to have the data.
And it will be published.
We'll share it with you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Really quick, I just had two really quick comments. One, um, I just wanted to say, um, it's great that I, to hear that you're working with Future Leaders of America. They're also working on a, um, a ban of using tobacco and multifamily dwellings and carpentery.
Right.
And so it's nice to see that you're working on that with them as well. And just two, your anecdotal story. Um, just brought me back. I don't know if you remember those DARE commercials in the eighties? Um, when, you know, the father is hounding the the son and he's like, where did you learn to use this? And then after a second, the the son says, I learned it from you, Dad. So it speaks to, you know, what you're saying, is that a lot of times, not just with, you know, um, a substance abuse or abuse, but in general, is that the the youth are looking to adults to, you know, as leaders and mimic that behavior. So, yeah.
Yeah, our cannabis preventionists go into the homes and meet with the family in their home, because that really just helps kind of alleviate that. And so many parents are very frustrated with what's happening. But lots of conversations, uh, realizing that there is is very complicated, right? What is what's happening? It's not, this is a symptom of a larger problem. And then working with our partners in the community to provide those services that families need to be supportive is really helpful.
Edwin, thank you so much for your presentation. I would like to thank you for the county board as well. Just wanted to say that um, Edwin is like an extension of our team, because he's administering this of through with the schools um, on our behalf. And Edwin and Bridget work very closely together. Um, um, they're, you know, constantly communicating about the reports and the impact and all of that. But just wanted to give you kind of structurally how it fits in. Really appreciate your, um, support countywide, and then also the fact that, you know, Santa Maria Valley schools so well too, and all the multiple hats that you do wear, Edwin. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much.
And now we'll move on to the consent agenda, um, to vote as a block to, um, approve the minutes of our last meeting and registration of credentials and declaration of surplus. Do I hear a motion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Um, at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to my guest companion here. He shares pretty well. I don't know.
I push pretty hard with all my stuff.
I almost ate his cake, but other than that, okay, Mr. Porter.
Thank you. Um, we'll we'll try to be short here. The, uh, one of the last committee meetings that we had, and I invite my, uh, committee co-members to speak as well. We wanted to go back and clean up a little bit of what our minutes, our committee minutes said about the inter-district, um, uh, transfer uh, items that we approved as a board, the policy back in November. And it really in- and revolved around some of the wording in our policy. And we wanted to share with the other board members, the wording is not meant to be a handcuff or directive in nature. But very general, realizing that virtually every single inter-district transfer is different on its own merits and is unique. And we want to make sure that the board realizes that that there is a lot of leeway and a lot of discretion on how we do each one of those cases, uh, in accordance with state law and our own good common sense. So that's really what I wanted to say, is we have another difficult decision to make going forward. That that policy is a general policy and is not meant to be overly prescriptive. And I would invite either one of my co-members to say anything else.
Thank you, Bruce. I I appreciate that. I think the only, um, I think what we wanted to reflect in the minutes, because it's not reflected in the policy, is that we wanted to provide, um, we wanted the the districts, who if they are going to deny an inter-district transfer appeal, if we're going to deny that, we need to, or the district denies it, that we want to, um, make certain that they pre- provide proof that they have, uh, it's the school's overcrowded, or if the school, if there's financial, uh, uh, a prob- uh, it's a financial issue, hardship. So I really wanted it to be in the policy, because it just seems like the the parents have the obligation to provide proof in writing for their, uh, reason for appeal. And I think the district should have, should also, just in terms of fairness and transparency, that this is a a very, um, um, uh, due process as as happening. And I don't think that parents see that when it's not in the policy, that it feels like it's not, it's it's already, it it's not in favor for them. So, and I want them to come and have an opportunity to come to us, if they're denied by the district. So if we're not going to have in the policy that we require that school districts provide evidence in writing um, for the reasons for denial, then I would like to make sure that the minutes in our, in our, for this meeting. And it it's reflected in Susan's email that she sent to us when I was asking what this was specifically regarding, uh, when we were going to, we had this policy issue on her. And I, and she's, uh, right here, it says, and I'd love this for this to be in the minutes, that, um, that we are, uh, going to ensure that through an administrative administrative process, SBCO staff will request districts to submit information about financial hardship or overcrowding in writing for the for an IDT hearing. Um, it won't be in the policy, and I hope in the future we can bring the policy back and have this, um, reflected, just for transparency. Thank you.
Let the minutes reflect. All right. Mr. Porter, I'm going to go back to you for item fifteen, board policies reading and adoption.
Okay, first of all, an apology to my fellow board members. We, uh, usually we bring you forty-five board policies, not all at once. So, so we only have one to approve today. Um, and that is regarding the the superintendent's, um, I can't say that word, so I'll say salary. Um, uh, we we wrote it to be fairly flexible and not prescriptive, once again. We had just been through one, uh, committee session, uh, salary committee session, so we kind of had a feel for how they went anyway. So the board po- the board policy as it is now in draft was meant to sort of follow along with that with some ideas on what to consider, but realizing that as time moves on, there's always different things to consider in the future. And we tried to write a flexible policy in that way. So I'll, uh, as the, um, committee chairman, I will, uh, make a motion that we approve the policy as it is written in your, uh, board book.
Um, the only, I have a discussion point, just being that, did this come from the committee unanimously?
This one? It did not. It was two to one.
Two to one. Okay. Just curious. So is there any discussion?
Yes, and the reason why I voted no on this pa- uh, policy as written is because I think we are limiting ourselves, because we're limiting ourselves to just using, um, comparative salaries to other um, counties that are similar size and superintendents. And I think that, um, these, um, first of all, I recognize that our superintendent is elected. We're elected as a county board, and our purview under the law is to set the salary. The salary, and so, and we have a fiduciary responsibility as well. Um, and we can, we can write this policy however we, and so I looked at other policies for county offices. And there's two local ones that are Ventura and, um, and Monterey. And they have set additional criteria that I suggested that we include for enhancing, um, sa- salaries. Um, because if these county offices are using this as a tool to enhance the salaries, then we should probably be using this tool as well, because otherwise we're just mirroring the salaries that that, say, Monterey. Because as long as we keep going to the medium, they're just going to keep going up. So this is, this is a vote about the office of the superintendent, and it's not a vote about Superintendent Salcedo. And so I just would like to have some additional criteria for the board to have the flexibility to say, do, if there are other factors, rather than just, um, comparing other salaries. And, um, so I just think we can, we can have, um, this, the Monterey and Ventura And, um, so I just think we can, we can have, um, it's the Monterey and Ventura language. It talks about, um, just any other factors. I mean, it doesn't have to be a review. It doesn't have to be, I mean, we could have stated, um, goals that we agreed upon and that if they, you know, the, if the superintendent meets those goals, um, we can enhance the salary even more than the, than the comparative salary. So I think it just opens up us for just more flexibility. So that's why I voted no. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, if I may, we had a long discussion about that in the, in the committee meeting. And that's why we did, we did list a few suggested criteria for the future. But we made sure we use the terms, but not limited to. So in the future, if we ever decide to, as a board, to put in some very specific criteria uh, and to require the superintendent to, uh, uh, make some objectives and talk about measuring and statistics, we have the ability to do that in this policy, but it's not prescribed ahead of time. So the idea once again was to keep it flexible.
Okay.
Um, but when we said it's not limited to, that was pertaining to comparable salaries. That's in that paragraph. So it doesn't mean it's limited to other, it doesn't give us an avenue to use other criteria. Because specifically it's addressing, it's under that heading of, uh, comparing other county offices, you know, and superintendent salaries and, uh, things of that nature. So I think there specifically it's referencing, um, salaries.
I'd like to just comment that, um, since we don't set the contract terms with our superintendent, because she, like us, is elected, I don't know how we could put specific criteria in her compensation package since she, there's no mechanism for her to have them from us in advance of that. So it'd be like after the fact, we're looking at your compensation and we're saying, how did she do against this goal? But she never had that goal. So I, I like the flexibility of being able to, um, use the criteria that we need to use to feel comfortable in setting, you know, our, our role is limited to setting the compensation. And the methodology that is in the proposed policy, I found acceptable to do that. So that's my comment. We have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Hello. I got it. Number 16 is the recommended approval for staff to update a position title in the board policies. And this is coming from our superintendent. So perhaps she would like to add a little clarification here.
Absolutely. Um, a few months ago, we made some just changes to job titles within the organization from assistant superintendent to associate superintendent. And several board policies refer to assistant superintendents that the community or families could contact for different reasons or even staff and employees. So as we find those board policies, or we could do a search, a look up and change, we wanted to, rather than bring the board policies for your 45 that you usually have, um, uh, and say, rather, when we have those board policies, we could just shift that title and ask, seek your approval, since we would be changing them, but only that, that title change. Yeah, thank you.
I think she's trying to put your committee out of work, Bruce. I don't know. What do you think?
And I'm so excited about that. I will make, I will make a motion to approve since this is an action item.
I will second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, number 17. If you remember, well, and Steve reminded us in his comments earlier about our, um, resolution kind of after the fact, um, because we didn't have a adoption of a time for this when Hope ran into the problem that they did. Um, it's happened again, but this time we have a chance to take action upfront, but it's still an emergency resolution for awarding the contract without bidding or advertising for some work at the Cathedral Oaks campus. And there's a description of that in the motion, um, in the item on the agenda. Uh, are there any questions about the resolution that the superintendent could address? Or?
Just to get the discussion going, as the only sitting civil engineer on the board, I will make a, a motion to approve this.
All right. Okay, any discussion? Oh, sure.
Similar, um, to the building that, uh, in the, under the, you know, right now, um, maybe not as possible to get and, and.
This sign isn't big enough. Technical difficulties. Um, if, if it's possible to have an asbestos test prior to the work, just so then that way we would know, um, and that it wouldn't cause any delays. That's the only thing.
Beth and, um, Galus and Steve Torres to respond if you would like. Okay, thank you.
Yes, in this case, the HVAC system is routinely maintained and it's a newer system. Um, so we, we're aware, everything's already been stripped away from the ceiling. So we don't have any of that same, um, visible issue or material there in this case.
Thought to continue to, um, when we have issues, to include that information for the board if, before we hear about it, if you've had a chance to determine whether asbestos is in the prospects or not. And so it's a relief this time to know it is not. That's very good. Okay, this being a, um, a resolution, we need to do, oh, any other discussion? We need to do a roll call? Hannah?
Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mrs. Dany?
Aye.
Mrs. DeWort?
Aye.
Ms. Erman?
Aye.
Mrs. Frost?
Aye.
And Mr. Porter?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes.
Do we have that cover letter? Okay. We're on item 18. It's another resolution. Um, and I'm going to give you a minute to take a look at this cover letter that Susan and I will sign and forward with our motion. So we are seeking the co-authorship and support of AB 906 in our California Assembly, um, in regards to support for county office of education operated juvenile court and community schools. And this is, uh, it's not just us. It is a collaboration, would that be a good word? Of organizations that are all under the, um, education bandwidth. Um, CSBA is one of them, but just one. There are many that are coming forward and asking for organizations to pass resolutions in support of this to see if we can't weigh, sway some favorable outcome on this item. So, uh, are there any? Dr. Salsito, did you want to add anything or?
I noticed that Mr. Porter, I think, might have a comment, so I think.
I'm just.
Oh, you're, you're ready.
I, I think he wanted a break and he didn't get one. Yes. Okay, then, do we have a motion? Mr. Porter?
It's totally insane to fund court and community schools on ADA. I mean, you saw the numbers in that little matrix at the beginning of the board packet, how the numbers change over time. So this is so important and I, I think we should all be proud to support this. And so I make a motion to approve.
Any further discussion? And now we have a roll call.
Okay, Mrs. Cardy?
Aye.
Mrs. Dany?
Aye.
Mrs. DeWort?
Aye.
Ms. Erman?
Aye.
Mrs. Frost?
Aye.
Mr. Porter?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I would just like to say, this is going to be heard on the floor on April 26th. So this vote and, and this having our names associated, this is really helpful.
Thank you. Um, there are three information items in our packet today. The standard personnel report, the standard Williams and Valens Whaley Uniform Complaints Quarterly Report, and correspondence from the California Department of Education confirming the acceptance of our first interim report. Yay. Well done. Any questions about any of the information items? Future agenda topics? Hearing none? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? And second? All right, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We be done.